............................................................ Thank you. And we have Darrell Gould for public comment.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Darrell Gould. I have three students at KMS. Especially coming out tonight, I wanted to address the committee. I've been active by necessity with education in our district. Better to talk about it the last six years. But by necessity, a lot of that was at the Saturday district. We do a lot of fighting for the students. That's IEP bullying, a variety of areas. And over this time, obviously, we're very frustrated with the administration. And what I've seen now is, obviously, we have Dr. Bryce on board. And I've had the opportunity to have a couple of conversations with him about his view for our district, his plans for our district. And he's a, I like to think, I'm a big person of enjured character. And I really like Dr. Bryce. I find him to be honest and genuine. I honestly believe that he has the best interest of our students at heart, which is why I am asking our school committee to consider the extension of his contract beyond the interim period. This is a man who came in under very difficult circumstances, as we all know. And he stepped up and delivered. So far, we're only a couple of months into our school year, and we've seen some amazing things happen. It's a work in progress. We're changing the culture of the entire district. It's not going to happen overnight. But the things that we, both as parents, have seen, things that I hope that I see in the next two years, I've seen in two months. And so this is a man who put together a three- to five-year plan for our district. I believe he can make us a top school district in the state. I think we need to give him the opportunity. And I think that he deserves a level of commitment. And I honestly think, as part of the business, the nice meeting the district really should take up, you know, honoring the effort he's put forward to our community. He's come in here, and I believe in conversation with Dr. Bryce wants to stay. So let's try and keep... Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not going to ask for a motion to seal the executive session minutes because it was recessed. And so we will reconvene at the end of tonight's meeting, open session meeting, and then we will come out to seal those minutes after that. So we'll move on to the consent agenda if I can get the motion approved.
Motion to approve, Madam Chairwoman.
Second. Discussion. Did you say yes to discussion? I said discussion. Okay. Please be silent. Okay. No discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, moving on to superintendents' recommendations.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, thank you. Recommendation S. 2019-67 that the school committee upon the recommendation of the superintendent is supported by the budget facilities subcommittee approved the necessity of construction amendments.
So... Discussion.
I'm actually going to turn this over to Dr. Bryce or Raquel.
Yeah, so I'll start and then turn it over to our budget director. So we've had several conversations, the last one at the budget and finance subcommittee, where we really had a conversation about the importance of making sure that, in terms of the capital budget, that we're able to forecast whether or not we're going to have appropriate cash flow in order to satisfy and meet all of those requirements. And so what we've done is reached out to RIDE, brought our Department of Education to ask them if we could prepare an amendment. They gave us that, okay, that we could submit an amendment. And then based on that, we completely admitted to the budget subcommittee. And what you see in front of you in the packet is the amendment. What we really want to do is we want to do two things. One is we want to make sure that we have covered all of the things in the FY '20 budget that we're able to fund, because we know that we will get somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty to sixty-seven percent reimbursement for those projects. But that reimbursement may occur. Some of them may take notice, which means we can get the right plan. Others of those reimbursements, we get over three years. The other thing that we are focused on doing is we want to write a educational facilities master plan, which includes technology, which includes all of the things that we want to do over the next five to ten years in terms of construction in our district. And so that is a new requirement for RIDE. Previously, they published a report, and that report, we were just able to use that. But now they are requiring every district to have their own educational master facilities plan. And this gives us that opportunity. We also received a $150,000 out of rent from RIDE to help us to under-fund that cost. And so that's why the amendment has been presented to you. Raquel, did I miss anything?
That was pretty good. It really is. We are sending the amendment up to RIDE. We are required to do so because in our original necessity of construction application, it was presented to RIDE by category and location. So when you exceed the location, you must have an amendment. And that's what we're doing tonight. If approved, it will go up to RIDE as is. We'll get feedback. If they approve it, we'll come back to the committee with a memorandum of agreement for everyone to sign.
Are there any other questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Recommendation S. 2019-68 that the school committee upon the recommendation of the superintendent is supported by the budget facilities subcommittee approved disposable outdated and obsolete texts and materials.
So...
Second.
Discussion.
Is that only the library books?
No, the books that, the majority of the books that we're asking to get rid of were old substitute status textbooks that were replaced with the new books that were approved last fall.
What do we do with old library books?
We would follow the same process where they would be inventoried and then disposed of.
Dr. Bryce?
Yeah, I think one other thing that I would add is, as discussed at the budget subcommittee, we want to start bringing disposable items on a monthly basis, just because it costs us money to keep those materials, those outdated, non-useable materials, either in a pot that we have out behind U. Cole or in other places. And so we just want to, on a routine basis, start working that to the school committee's attention so that we can start disposing of those items.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Recommendation S. 2019-69 that the school committee upon the recommendation of the superintendent is supported by the budget facilities subcommittee approved $14,170 for the purchase of Grade One and Grade Two literacy kits, guided reading collections.
So...
Second.
Discussion. Diane?
Sure, I'd be happy to describe this. So last year, we purchased some supplemental reading kits for the elementary schools. They're large boxes of leveled books so that we can accommodate students of different reading abilities and skills that they need to work on. And they were very well received and have used quite a bit in our schools. Each school received two kits. We're asking for the additional purch-, or the purchase of two additional kits for U. Cole to the size of the school and the number of the teachers.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Recommendation S. 2019-7 that the school committee upon the recommendation of the superintendent approved the request of twelve families to homeschool their children for the 2019-20 school year adhering to all requirements set forth by the Bristol Warren Regional School District.
So move. Second.
Discussion. Diane, do you mind speaking to the twelve?
The majority of these requests are renewals. So at this time of year, we're making sure that parents want to continue homeschooling, and that involves sending out a letter to them and waiting for their response. So that's why you see more of them at the beginning of the year like this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Recommendation S. 2019-71 that the school committee upon the recommendation of the superintendent approved BWRSD school committee resolution on field trip funding.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Everybody knows what this is about. What, we discussed, we discussed a bit of this last time. And we did receive a couple of resolutions from other school committees recently that have passed us. I think we too have passed it at this point.
I'm aware of two having passed it. I know another district has it on the general, to our right, basically, in around the state.
Marian, would you just do a quick overview of this?
So what all this resolution, that does is adds our senators and our reps to, if you reveal, that adds a sentence to our General Order 1638-6A. That's a section that forbids us as parents to pay for anything. That's the section that doesn't let us charge in some school. That's the section that doesn't allow our items to be applied. So what we did is we simply put a sentence in that says, "This brief prohibition does not apply to schools, slots, and field trips for which families may be asked for funding as long as the district provides funding to any student whose family does not afford the trip." I don't, that's not harsh upon the district. We did this all the time, nobody ever knew it. So basically, if somebody can't afford a trip, somehow this fundraising or something that's done by the school district, that will let that child up.
Is there any?
So this would be a resolution that would be submitted to the General Assembly?
Yes.
Is there currently a draft bill that a representative or a senator is ready to sponsor?
So I personally added language to this particular general law. I've sent it out to some senators and reps that I personally know, and they're in the process of doing that. I know even one of, Jason Knight, who's at a meeting here a few months ago, and he's waiting for his district to pass a resolution to let me do that. He's one of the reps. I know that's how he had to balance the process, which he's worked with a rap. So the general, I mean, he'll do a write-down change.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
So I did, just so everyone knows, I think I picked out the chair of one and maybe a...
We looked at extra.
Wes Friend, I see Wes Friend is the other one. So the, I edited ours a bit because it would be, let's see, the second whereas, where it says, "The school committee recognizes that special activities such as class trips, band encroach trips, tech conferences, and competitions in major's classroom are often significant moments in students' go-to experience." So those, the events that I put in there are, basically, we have this district, but they might have been like close up or different districts. So if you see, if you see other resolutions pertaining to this, that would be the one section that carried.
So the underlying change to the Rhode Island general law is the same in all the resolutions?
Right. Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Recommendation S. 2019-72 that the school committee upon the recommendation of the superintendent approved the human resources contract proposal.
So move. Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, so just, I need a point of clarity. So because we recessed executive session, we haven't made decisions in executive session that now carry over. So do we need to delay this until we come out? Just as a point of clarification.
I think it was pretty much, the decision was made, it would just be, I wouldn't seal. Yeah, you could vote on it right now. We discussed it under the age of, you know, job boards. So you can certainly vote on this now.
Okay. Do you have another question, Mark, before we move on to that?
I can't, I can't.
Okay. You say we can move on? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Bryce?
Thank you. So superintendent's remarks. There are several things that I just want to bring to the attention of the school committee as well as our public. Number one is that every school in the district is required to, on a yearly basis, complete a school safety plan. That plan must be reviewed and updated yearly. And the school committee has been given the opportunity to look at those plans. I've reviewed them all. I've made comments and provided feedback where necessary. And after this notification, by November the first, we will notify RIDE, and I will sign off that the plans have been reviewed and updated. Given, unfortunately, the times we live in where the need to make sure that our schools are adequately prepared in the event of what we call a mass cavity event, we just need to make sure that our schools know what they're doing, that our staff are aware, and that our students have been exposed to what to do in the event of an issue. Tomorrow morning, I will be meeting with the chiefs of police for both Bristol and Warren at the Bristol Police Department, where we will be reviewing one or two strategies as we relate to making sure that we're keeping our schools safe. And I will share that information with the school committee in my bi-monthly update, too.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All right, so that brings me to teaching and learning fellows, as well as analysis of substitute salaries. And I'm actually going to take them both together. One of the issues that BWRSD needs to address is the use of substitutes. So right now, we pay eighty dollars for some substitutes and ninety dollars for some substitutes. It is clear that we are not regionally competitive with some other folks. And so this idea that we would increase salaries is something that we need to look into. But prior to doing that, we actually want to provide the school committee, properly of the next budget finance subcommittee, with information. However, knowing how critically important having staff in building is, we actually wanted to get a pilot. And so that pilot is something that we're calling teaching and learning fellows. And two of our schools, and I actually just did some back-of-the-envelope numbers, last year at U. Cole, we spent over $118,000 in substitute cost. At KMS, we spent over $57,000 in substitute cost. And what we want to do is we want to actually hire as substitutes two individuals that would be assigned to those schools for the remainder of the year. So whether we have 140 days, 145 days, we would pay these individuals approximately $120 per day. They would be assigned to the school. Here's where the math works in our favor. So the math works in our favor because if we assign staff a substitute to the building, if that substitute is able to cover for a TA, a teacher, a teaching assistant, or a classroom teacher, it means that we already have a person in the building. We're going to cover that vacancy. And more importantly, we will not have to pay for fraps. So here's what a prep is. A prep is when we, during a teacher's prep period, by contract, we ask them to go and cover a classroom because of an absence. And so when we have to do that, we end up having to pay them one-seventh of their teaching salary. And so when you add up all of those preps, on average, we believe that those preps cost us around $50,000 per year. And so what we want to do is assign two full-time staff members that could do both things. They could cover a classroom and teach a class. Or they could be a TA, and they could go out on the, on the, well, at U. Cole, they could go out on the rec yard and actually cover recess. So right now, just because we know that we are shorthanded, myself, Dr. Santa, and other members of our staff are actually filling in at, filling in at U. Cole at least a half-day per week, where we cover lunch and recess. And while it certainly gives us an opportunity to meet students and to see the joy of students playing, here's the issue that we really are going to have. Stabilizing who's in the building so that we're not having to pull people, and instead, we can put people where we need them, has a benefit that is both financial, but also benefits the wear and tear on our staff, whether they be TAs or, or, or teachers. And I would just share with everyone that the school year is not a sprint. It is a marathon. And what we do not want to do is wear our staff out early in the year because we have more than 100 days left in the school year. So we've got some work to do. And so in order to really think about this, I've been able to meet with the leadership of both C-94 as well as BWPA to seek their feedback. They are both supportive of this plan because it addresses the need to have additional staff in the buildings. And we know that other districts, at least one other district is a marathon, right? Has something similar. I think they call it teacher intern. But for us, it gives us flexibility, it gives us staffing. It helps to, in some ways, reduce the total cost that we're paying for subs. And it gives us sure people in the building for the remainder of the school year. And so because of that, that is something that I just wanted to alert the school committee that we are moving forward with.
Thank you.
First, let me say I'm incredibly appreciative of the creative thinking that goes into trying to solve some of these problems. So just have a couple of implementation questions, I guess? Or maybe it's details. One, are these two individuals, are they're not going to be union employees? Is that right?
That is correct.
And they're being hired, are they given any guarantees of permanency over the course of the year?
They would be with us for the remainder of the year unless they choose to leave. But they would not be full, they would not be full-time certified employees. They would be classified as substitutes.
All right. So, and am I right in sort of meaning from what you had to say that part of it is of wanting to have two people there full-time, is to have continuity in terms of who the people are that are there?
I think continuity is one thing, but also the reasonable assurance that every day when our building, our principal secretaries walk in and they look to see in our substitute poll who's put in, who's going to be absent, they know that they've got bodies to fill in. Because that really is, here's our magic, to being able to juggle all of the schedules and to get coverage in certain places so that students are chaperoned, while at the same time, we can keep instruction moving forward. And that's what we miss when we're putting in a number of teachers in coverages.
Right. So I guess, what I'm thinking about, maybe what my concern is, and I'm not even headed to concern, is that I like where this is going, and, but we don't, I guess I don't, it's unclear to me that we have any guarantee that whoever we put into this position will necessarily stick with it, right? So if we don't have, if they're essentially a long-term substitute, is there anything that's a part of the plan that would provide any guarantees to us that, you know, two weeks down the road, they've got an offer to go be a substitute in some other district for some other amount of money, and they're like, well, today I'm not coming?
Yeah, so I think, number one, we're, so that is actually the right question. There are a couple of things that we think are going to be helpful. Number one is that the salary is going to be competitive. The salary will be $120 per day, plus it's a guarantee over the remainder of the school year. The other thing is that many of these individuals are going to be certified teachers and in some ways have the experience working in a district. Then it gives you an understanding of the district. And we have to begin to have a pro-your-own policy that says, folks that have worked in our district, we want to make sure that they are applying for positions and going through the process to have an interview, right? We can't guarantee them a job, but certainly, if you've been at a particular school for the remainder of the year, you should be someone that knows about the vacancies that are coming up and goes through that interview process. The other thing I would mention, and I didn't, is that to, for each of these, it would cost us for the remainder of the year approximately $17,000 per person for the remainder of the year. That would just be salary and no benefits, or right around $35 per year. So that's about $7,000 for four staff members, right? That would help us to stabilize schools. And we believe that we wouldn't have to pay additional preps because we now have people that can fill in both. And this is really the technical part. They can fill in as actual teachers because they have a bachelor's degree, and maybe they might need to be certified, but they can also fill in as TA on the playground, right? And so that's the level of flexibility that we really are seeing.
Thank you.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Dr. Bryce, if I understood you correctly, we're looking at two at KMS and two at U. Cole for the four fellows for the remainder of the year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
In the selection of the people, is this something that you'll go through an interviewing process for?
Absolutely. So we're going to post on the school spring, and we're going to go through the normal hiring process, right? So we're going to post it. People have to apply, and then there will be an interview process.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We'll move to subcommittee reports and Mr. Bradshaw first with the policy.
Okay, excellent. Our next policy meeting is scheduled for next Monday, November 4th, at 6:00 PM at the Oliver Building. We are currently working on the agenda, but I do know for sure that we'll be reviewing and updating the code of conduct that's been circulated around staff that we've looked at a handful of times, taking it up. We'll also be reviewing the wellness policy. We're also in the process of prioritizing the policies that need to be touched, updated, or eliminated in that manner, as well as addressing the people that might be coming down the pipe throughout the state.
Thank you, Carlin. And next is budget and facilities. Mr. Bradshaw?
Good evening, thank you. Our next meeting is going to be on November 18th. Our next meeting is going to be on November 18th, which is a Monday, in this building at 6:30. We're going to continue our discussion of the audit, our annual audit that will be in the throes of. We will be discussing, I believe we'll be having some bunch of amendments going through at this meeting. So it looks to be a jam-packed meeting in November. Everyone is welcome to attend, if please come up.
Thank you. Adam, with personnel and contract negotiations?
Sure. The district has received notification from the BWEA that they are ready to begin negotiations for the teachers' union contract, which is expired to the end of the school year. We are, as a personnel and contract negotiations subcommittee, going to be scheduling a number of meetings on our end to prepare for those negotiations and working in connection with the school committee. Those are not yet scheduled, but we're looking forward to that process and working collaboratively to reach great results. Thanks.
Thank you. And wellness, Carly and Chris.
I'll take care of it since I have you under the weather. Our next meeting, we just figured it out actually, today after polling our membership, it'll be Wednesday, December the 4th, at 4:00 PM at the Oliver Building in the conference room. We are excited that after a long kind of search process and talking to the right people, hopefully we have our first student join us. She's been invited, hopefully she'll be to the tech. I believe she's a sophomore, looking at her email address. So we're thrilled to have some student representation. We're still in the process of kind of goal-setting for the year. If you've got anything else, we'd love to have it for you by tech.
Thank you. Thank you. And for chairperson's initiative, interesting, I'm thinking that's something Carly was talking about. I am working to revisit creating a student rep to the school committee position. I began some work on that last year. It didn't go in the direction I wanted it to go, and so I'm going to be revisiting that, looking at some ways that other districts do this and policies that they have that support it, and working with Dr. Bryce and Dr. DiBiase to, at the school committee, to see who can get a student rep to the school committee. Thank you. Dr. Bryce?
Yes, I just wanted to alert the entire community to three days of events. On November the 5th and the 6th, we will have a conversation about the future of education for BWRSD students. And so if you go to our website, you will see those flyers. We're asking parents and the public at large to come out and to hear that presentation. It should take about 90 minutes, but it really will be helpful in helping everybody in the community to think about what school should look like in the next 10 years as we intend to prepare and people to be successful. And then for three groups on November the 7th, I'm beginning my superintendent's advisory committee meetings. And so I require my contract to meet with representatives from BWEA, but I actually also believe that it was good to meet with representatives from C94. And so I've invited them to a separate meeting on that same day. And then lastly, but probably even more importantly, to your point, I have invited middle school students and high school students to what we're calling a superintendent's advisory meeting. And so we will be meeting with those young people on the same day to hear their interests, hear their concerns, and to help them feel empowered. Because this is, education is not something that should be done to them. It should be something that's done with them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
The two meetings on data and education, is it the same presentation, or is it two separate?
Correct, same presentation. One is at KMS and the other is at Memorial Hospital. But it's the exact same presentation, so you can pick either one.
Dr. Bryce, will your office be emailing that out? Is that gone out already?
Yes, it has gone out, and there are flyers. But certainly, we've asked all our principals to make sure that they're sharing with their school communities and stuff.
Great, thank you so much. So it looks like I need a motion to adjourn.
A move that we read in the executive session?
I ask for a motion.
I just did it.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?